As the mayor of the town of Clayton, I call this town council meeting to order. Ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we thank you for the many blessings of this day, Lord, and we ask now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in your great name we pray. Amen. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
There are, Mayor. Would draw your attention on the agenda to under new business, so that's number eight. E is the fire department's safe for grant. We are going to pull that from tonight's agenda, and that will be on a future agenda. And then, under number nine, staff reports, we actually do have three staff reports that we're going to be looking for under D. One from Joy, one from Joshua, and one from Dave DeYoung. Sorry, that's one from Joy Garrettson, one from Joshua Baird, and one from David DeYoung under other staff reports. And then lastly, we are going to ask to go into closed session. That'll be under item 11, in accordance with general statutes to attorney-client privilege.
All right, I have that duly noted on our agenda. Up next is your consent agenda. Yep. And a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is a public hearing, the 2019-144 ANX Town of Clayton Regional Waste Water Pretreatment Facility.
Samantha Willen-Wauber, Planning Director. This is the annexation for the wastewater pretreatment facility on Powhatan Road. This is the Town of Clayton property, the entire property. The wastewater treatment plant is closer to the railroad tracks on that side of the property, and their request is to annex this property into the Town of Clayton town limits. It is approximately 22 acres, and I would be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments for staff? Thank you, ma'am.
This has been noted as a public hearing, and therefore I believe the annexation should go forward.
Thank you. So this has been noted as a public hearing. I know up in the public hearing, anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to staff. To council. So he speaks after this? Okay.
Just the annexation of the property which the town already owns.
I got you.
And so the next two items will be related to the pretreatment facility as constructed, but the property needs to come into the town limits.
Got you. All right. So I'll turn it over to council for deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion. We adopt ordinance 2919-10-01.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the adoption of the ordinance. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now, on to the new business, the acceptance of the R. Stephen Biggs Regional Waste Water Treatment Pretreatment Facility.
Yes.
My bad, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rich Kapola, Director of Public Services. As a follow-up to the annexation that you just heard for the property on Powhatan Road, we have an item in front of you that is a request, a recommendation to accept the regional wastewater treatment plant. This project's been a long time coming, several years in the making. We've had great partnership with Novo Nordisk, the county, several state agencies, funding agencies, as well as a lot of town staff that have been involved with this over the last few years. So we're really excited to bring this to you. Tonight, we're going to have a few people speak with you to give you a little more information. First person that will come in up will be Nancy Medlin. She'll be discussing the request for the naming rights to the facility. Followed by that, Shayla and Matt will be coming up from Novo Nordisk to kind of give you a little bit of an overview of the actual project itself. And then finally, I'll come back up and request the actions that are in front of you tonight. So with that, I'll kick it to Nancy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Rich mentioned, this has been a long time coming project, a project that actually began as a brainchild of our former town manager, Steve Biggs. Steve long wanted to provide economic opportunity for this area, to build our biofarm presence in the community, and he also wanted to provide services to our existing biofarms in the RTZ. And he sat around a conference table and talked with the folks out in the RTZ and said, you know, what could we do that would really be helpful to you guys? And this is one of the ideas that came about. And we began talking about it more than four years ago, and it's been a long road, bumpy at times, but here we are. And I think it's fitting that you guys are wanting to name the facility after Steve. I think that he would take great pride in that. And I know those of us who worked with him take great pride in it. So I appreciate your willingness to do that.
Awesome. Thank you, Nancy.
With that, I'd like to ask Shayla and Matt to come up. They've got a presentation for you that has a little bit more information about the plant itself.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening, council, staff. My name is Shayla Jones. I am government and public affairs for Novo Nordisk, and I'm joined today by my colleague, Matt Kuntz, who is site support for Novo Nordisk. On behalf of Novo Nordisk, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here with you today to present this completed project. As you know, over the 25 years that Novo Nordisk has been here in Clayton, there have been quite a number of expansions, but none quite as large as the one in 2016 where we announced that Novo Nordisk would be investing $2 billion in bringing an active pharmaceutical ingredient facility to Clayton, appropriately located right across the street from our existing site. And we, at the time, it was the largest manufacturing investment in the state's history. But in order for this site to be successful, in order for this expansion project to be successful, there were some additional infrastructure needs that we had, and that included being able to address our unique wastewater needs. We are incredibly grateful for the town willing to partner with us and to collaborate on building this regional wastewater pretreatment facility. We take our environmental stewardship very seriously, and so it's very important to us that we're able to treat the byproducts of what we're going to be creating at the manufacturing facility, the DAPY manufacturing facility. So without further ado, I want to take you back 17 months to the location that was identified by the partnership between Novo Nordisk and the Town of Clayton. This is what it looked like. And over those 17 months, we've seen a considerable amount of growth and construction. I learned what piles means along the way. And this is a really good point in the construction process to demonstrate just how large the state-of-the-art facility really is. And this is what it looks like today. And on the 10th of this month, hopefully many of you will get a chance to be a part of the ribbon cutting and get to see it again firsthand. So I'm going to go through a few numbers with you. Four years ago, the collaboration between Novo Nordisk and the Town of Clayton began. Together, we identified eight acres to disturb in the construction process. Again, it took 17 months. There were 156 units of equipment needed to operate this facility that includes tanks, mixers, pumps, blowers, et cetera, 190,000 craft man-hours, approximately 440,000 gallons per day of waste treatment capacity at this site, and possibly much more as time goes on, and about 5,422,400 gallons of total tank volume. And so now my colleague, Matt Kuntz, who's been really integral to the success of this project, construction project, is going to demonstrate for you just exactly how this all works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Matt Kuntz with Novo Nordisk. I'd also like to echo Shayla's comments. I've been working on this project since it was conceptualized over four years ago in the early days with Nancy and Tim Simpson and James Warren. So it's truly been a great partnership as we've worked through this. There certainly have been some bumps along the way, but you guys have been fantastic to partner with, and you know, I certainly know that this will be a great asset to bring more business here to the area, and your team has been phenomenal. So I'll start off by saying that. Getting back to the facility itself, how does it work? It's fairly straightforward. The process actually starts with flow utilization. So the water from the DAPY project, actually we do some flow adjustment, pH adjustment onsite. It comes into two 500,000 gallon tanks, and essentially it buffers flow. So you think about, you flush the toilet, the water goes downstream, it goes into holding tanks, so it can then ultimately be processed further for further treatment. One thing you'll highlight is the facility is actually designed to be modular in construction. So you've got kind of one system on the top, one system on the bottom. Each one of those trains is set up to treat 220,000 gallons of wastewater. The second step of the process is nitrogen removal. So we add a whole lot of air. We've got microbiology organisms actually consume the nitrogen and convert it from nitrogen in the water to nitrogen in the atmosphere. The third step of the process is clarification. So as you grow those bugs, your water goes from fairly clear to almost chocolate milk, and that's your organisms that are actually consuming your nitrogen. Step three is actually clarification, so those bugs are actually settled back out, and you get nice, clear water from that process. Step four is sludge digestion, so those bugs actually go into large holding tanks, and we further break them down to minimize the amount of sludge that's generated from the process. Step five is phosphorus removal. So really, this wastewater is, you've got nitrogen and phosphorus in it, and the step five is actually phosphorus removal, so we add a chemical agent to bind to the phosphorus, and we float it out. Step six is solid removal, so we've got a large rotary drum thickener and a large centrifuge, and essentially we spin out the solids content. You end it with a nice, clean wastewater coming out the back. And then step seven is a project, once again, great collaboration with the Town of Clayton to build a new lift station to handle both our wastewater as well as wastewater generated in the immediate area. I have a couple of points in here of step eight, and we'll talk about it in the next slide, is the regionality. So one thing, as we talk through with the town and really want to use this as an economic development tool, is the regionality. So the facility was built to treat Nova wastewater first and foremost, but there's a whole lot of other attributes that were added to the facility to really make it a driver for economic growth in the area. They range anything from parking lots to administrative buildings to laboratory functions, sampling equipment. We've oversized utilities such that somebody else can come along and kind of plug in. Site access control, which is actually tied into Town of Clayton existing infrastructure, so leveraging what you guys already have in place. Stormwater collection from the roadways and onsite infrastructure. Modular design, so you saw that we actually had two modules. Future users can come in and add a third module or add differential modules, depending upon what their nutrient loading is and best means of removing it. We've also added pH adjustment processes which can be, support both current needs and future needs, bulk chemical storage in the back of the facility. Our sludgeing capacity is actually only slated to run a few hours per week, so that's got a lot of capacity there. Onsite fire, water, domestic water infrastructure, and then of course, all the IT infrastructure there as well. So really, it's been designed such that it'll benefit future users and hopefully can be used as a solid economic development tool to bring more businesses to the area. And that is it. So we will open it up to any questions you guys may have.
Awesome. Questions? I can't believe I don't have some detailed questions about how this process works.
Tour a few weeks ago, and it's really impressive.
All right, awesome. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, with that, this evening, you have two actions in front of you. The first one is going to be a request to accept the donation of the pretreatment plant from Novo Nordisk to fold that into our POTW. We did have Jacob's Engineering, formerly CH2M, involved throughout this process, kind of helping us be eyes and ears and be subject matter experts. They were a great partner throughout that, so I want to make sure we mention them as well. So at this point, from a staff standpoint and from everything that we've or you've heard, our recommendation would be to accept the pretreatment plant and hopefully open it up for business here very soon. So if you guys want to take a minute and deliberate on that?
All right.
Or if you have any questions for me as well?
Questions of Rich. Thank you, Rich. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Town of Clayton accepts the wastewater pretreatment facility constructed by Novo Nordisk as a donation to the town, as was contemplated by the September 2017 agreement between the town and Novo Nordisk, that the town manager is authorized to execute documents necessary for the transfer of ownership of the facility, including but not limited to the Second Amendment to the September 2017 agreement and the termination of ground lease with Novo Nordisk, and that the town manager is authorized to execute the operations and maintenance agreement and services agreement substantially in the form provided to the council in the agenda packet, subject to any changes upon final review by the town attorney.
Second. We have a motion and a second for acceptance. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
The section action this evening would be related to the naming of the facility, so that resolution's in front of you if you guys want to take action on that.
Yeah, I don't think it's written. I'm saying, we just...
Madam Clerk, does the mayor have the resolution?
It was in the agenda packet, and you have a copy here. Would you like to sit down?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't have mine. Thank you. Yeah, now you pull it up, Mike. Resolution: Acceptance and naming of regional wastewater pretreatment facility. Whereas Novo Nordisk Pharmaceutical Industries, LP Novo Nordisk, and the Town of Clayton entered into an agreement on September of 2017 which set forth the terms of their cooperative efforts on a facility that would be constructed by Novo Nordisk and dedicated to Clayton as public infrastructure for use as a regional wastewater pretreatment facility. And whereas the September 2017 agreement was the result of months of work by representatives of Clayton, Novo Nordisk, and various community partners, including obtaining a $4 million grant from the Gold Leaf Foundation and a $6 million grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce consisting of funds appropriated by the North Carolina Legislature. And whereas Clayton and the Novo Nordisk have diligently worked to design and construct and innovate wastewater pretreatment facility that will enhance Clayton's economic development and recruitment efforts focused on the pharmaceutical industry sector. And whereas Novo Nordisk has completed construction of that wastewater pretreatment facility and has offered to donate the wastewater pretreatment facility to Clayton pursuant to the September 2017 agreement. And whereas the vision for the regional pretreatment facility began under the direction of former longtime Clayton Town Manager Steve Biggs. And whereas in the desire of the town, and whereas it is the desire of the Town of Clayton to honor Steve Biggs and his dedication to this project, now therefore be it resolved, the Town of Clayton Council proudly and officially accepts the facility from Novo Nordisk and officially names the facility the R. Stephen Biggs Regional Waste Water Pretreatment Facility, duly adopted on the 7th day of October 2019, why in regular section. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you to everybody. You just witnessed history being made in Clayton, North Carolina, and we can't thank our partners at Novo Nordisk enough. We can't thank staff enough for all the time and energy and effort that's put into this. And, you know, this isn't like the sexiest thing that we could name for Steve Biggs, but it was definitely his vision to create a pretreatment facility that would boost the economic vitality of the Town of Clayton and create stronger relationships with our biopharmaceutical partners. So today is a wonderful day in the Town of Clayton. Thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
I think that's enough. Up next on the agenda is the Clayton Downtown Redevelopment Incentive Grants.
Good evening. David DeYoung with the Economic Development Department. Tonight before you, we have the first two ever Clayton Downtown Redevelopment Incentive Grants we've ever received for the Town of Clayton. This program was originally adopted in 2008 by Town Council and then subsequently also adopted by Johnson County. So the grant starts here with us taking action, and then after we take action, it will go to the county for their action on this grant. The grant is a grant for redevelopment projects specifically in the downtown overlay district, and the grant is a pre-construction to post-construction grant on tax value. Applicants who apply and do a major redevelopment to a building in downtown take the pre-tax value, and then after they've done the development, the post-tax value, and get a rebate on the taxes that they pay on that building or on the improvement. And that is at 100%, 100%, 75%, 50%, and 25% over the life of the grant. So it's a five-year grant. So they pay their taxes, we rebate them a portion of their taxes. So the first of the two is 800 East Main Street. This is affectionately known now as Vincent's Pub. As you were all aware, before it became Vincent's Pub, it was a hardware store, sorry, an auto parts store, that I think might have had an employee, one employee in it, and didn't look so great. The total tax difference on this case, or the tax value that we will be granting, and I'm squinting, is I believe $9,099.49 over the life of the grant for our portion, and then the county has their portion. You see that in the table at the bottom. The second grant is for 114 West Main Street. 114 West Main Street was a pretty impressive project. This was the old paper company. I believe there were four employees in the building before it was purchased by 127 Homes. Now there's at least four businesses in there, River Wild, Providence, 127 Homes, and Jaclyn Smith Properties. And there's upwards of 150 employees in that building, being downtown on a daily basis and eating at our restaurants. This grants a little bit more. This is $14,000 and change over the life of the grant, and the county's portion is sitting there as well, as you can see. So tonight, we're requesting approval for both grants, one for 114 West Main and one for 800 East Main Street. And I can answer any questions you guys may have.
Questions or comments for Dave? Thank you, Dave. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to authorize the agreements and the adoption of the resolution. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We appreciate that. Thank you. Up next is the Town of Clayton 2020 Holiday Schedule.
Yes, before you, you have a listing of the holidays. It's the policy of the Town of Clayton to follow the holidays that are issued by the state of North Carolina, and that's what you have in front of you for 2020.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the Town of Clayton 2020 Holiday Schedule. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the Clayton Town Council 2020 Meeting Schedule.
Before you have is proposed meeting schedule for 2020. Council meets the first and third Monday of each month at 6:00 PM. The only difference from that would be if it falls on a holiday, then the meeting would take place on Tuesday. The only other change that you will see historically in July, there's only been one meeting held during that month.
I approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to staff reports, beginning with the manager.
So I have just one thing I wanted to comment on, and that is that this week happens to be Public Power Week, and just want to echo, I guess, our Governor Roy Cooper proclaimed this, you know, at the state level, and I want to echo my appreciation for what our electric department does. There's only about seven or so electric cities in this state, and I happen to believe we have the very best. And I'm very, very proud of what our crew does and Dale Medlin as their leader does, and I wanted to say that to them publicly, so thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Dale, and your staff. Town Attorney?
No reports.
Town Clerk?
No reports, thank you.
Any other staff? Chief?
I'll jump ahead to the other three, senority.
Age before beauty, go ahead.
That's right. So I wanted to make an announcement for you for retirement that we're having. Jamie Hill got you.
You sure did. I fell out. Oh, Lord.
Jamie Hill started with us 28 years ago. He had three years with Clayton Rescue Squad before the name changed. Jamie's retiring. His retirement was October 1st with us. He's still full-time in Raleigh. A little tale about Jamie, I don't know if I got him hooked years ago or not, but when he was about that high, and I was, I got on fire department in '75, so he would stay with us, me and my wife, after we got married. And I'd scoop him up at night and put him in the truck, wrapped him up in a blanket, put him in the truck, carried, we'd been, we'd got calls. That's when we had telephones, we didn't have pagers and radios back then. I carried him with me, so I reckoned I got him hooked years ago, because Jamie was one of the first ones that we put on department after I became chief in '91. So his retirement is, we're having a dinner for him Monday night, next Monday night. So if any of you would like to come, if you would, let Matt Suffolk know, he's getting a list together. Okay?
Just to be clear, we do not bring children along with us on fire calls anymore, so...
Well, that's today. Back then, it really didn't matter. You did it other place. And this is also Fire Prevention Week. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Council and Mayor, I'm Joy Garrettson, Library Director. I just wanted to give a quick update on our ghost walk. So on Friday night from 5:00 to 7:00, the library and the Clayton Historical Association put together a ghost walk. We had a number of ghosts. They were played by Representative Donna White, the Honorable Jody McLeod, sitting in front of you, Bo Bull Durham Jr., Matt Pelis, Ruffin Atchison, and Ginger Morgan-Jones. We had Ms. Ho-Cut, we had Sarah Stallings, if we'll go, there's Ms. Ho-Cut right there. We had Sarah Stallings. Where is she? Donna White played her. We're trying to make everybody a little motion sick. She was great. Our mayor was Ashley Horn. I don't know if you can see him up there. He's shaking Quentin Miles's hand, that's Bo Durham. Yeah, there he is, playing Ashley Horn. It was, it was a really, really good event. We ended up having about 500 people attend. We thought maybe 100 would come, and so when 500 people showed up on the best feeling day of the year after all that heat, they were lined up around the cemetery. People just kept coming and coming and coming. It was kind of amazing to see so many people come through to hear about Clayton's history. We had groups, we had 24 different groups of people come through. The group started out small, and then we saw how many people were in line, and we made them a lot bigger, a lot faster. I was excited to see some of our councilmen here, and so many people from the community came out. Even people who had worked at the library during the week came out to support the library. It was just really thrilling for us to see. None of this would have happened without Pam Baumgartner, so if you see her, give her a pat on the back. She pretty much single-handedly put this thing together with the support of our actors and the Clayton Historical Association. Stacy was a huge help to her, really got the word out. Stacy was a huge help to her, really got the word out and made this successful. Stacy also is really trusting of people and will let children help her take a picture from time to time. And so I don't know if you see some ragamuffins in the crowd, but we brought our ragamuffins with us and they had a great time. It was just, it was just really great. It was a wonderful day to celebrate Clayton 150th anniversary. I'm probably forgetting to thank somebody, but...
Well, Pam Gardner's going to get on you, Pam Bunger's going to get on you if you forget anything, so...
Yeah, she will.
There's that.
There she is, right there on the bottom right-hand, for those of you who don't know her. She lives and breathes Clayton history and has a van full of costumes. So if you catch her on the side of the road, steal one, I'm sure she'd appreciate it. But anyway.
Thank you for that. And thank you for everybody who attended. And I would like for us to send a letter to Pam to let her know that she has created something that Clayton has never had before and Clayton will never do without again for 150 years. It was incredibly, unbelievably remarkable, because when you attend, you don't know what to expect. And you think, maybe we'll have 100 people. And you'll think, you think, maybe it's going to be so hot, I don't know if I can stand for two hours. And you just make up all these stories as a participant about what could go wrong and what might not be right, and am I going to remember everything? And it could not have been more wonderful. Unbelievable the amount of people that attended this. And I have already gotten 30 emails saying, next year, it really should be two nights, if not a full weekend.
And we'll have to buy you a bigger hat.
And I need a bigger hat, yeah. Yeah, that was my thinking cap. But everybody who participated was amazing. They took on their jobs seriously. You know, all of our tour guides that were there, the volunteers to help get the crowds around, were just phenomenal. I did have to get word to Donna White a couple of times, she needs to speed it up a bit. Yeah. She was creating the lag and in the line. But she had a lot to say, so she had a beautiful story to tell. So we can't thank all of you enough, and our friends with Clayton Historical Association as well. It's a great way to continue to celebrate 150 years.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Good evening, mayor, council, Josh Alberd, town engineer. I would like to provide an update to you guys tonight on the Sam's Branch Greenway project. I have not been involved with this project from the very beginning, but throughout the past month, just want to kind of give you guys an update on where we're at, what to expect going into this. Just to kind of in a high-level overview of the project, if anyone's not familiar with it, the Greenway project will connect the existing Sam's Branch at the trailhead at O'Neill Street over to Legend Park at City Road, asphalt greenway trail with some sections of boardwalk. There's a stream crossing in there for a pedestrian bridge across there as well. So going to be a great project. And we, we have a contractor on board. We have selected a CEI firm to handle the inspections and all the testing and to help us ensure quality on the project. We've had a pre-construction meeting on July 23rd. Our original intent and kind of focus was to start at the O'Neill Street with the pedestrian tunnel through there. Once we've got all, kind of everyone on board and got all of the body in the loop, there's some areas that we wanted to reevaluate and ensure we had them permitted correctly. So we're working through some of those items, and we've shifted our focus towards the City Road Legend Park side. We're actually, contractor's going to start construction in that area and work his way in from there, start cutting that trail in. The contractor actually mobilized today and started work, and so we are fully under construction on that. And we will be, we've been working through closing that park down, ensure everybody is safe, ensure all the programming is taken care of, and the contractor has room to work safely and protects everyone as we build the path through that park as well. As far as the O'Neill Street, again, I kind of mentioned, we've shifted our focus, construction more to the City Road Legend Park side. That road closure is on hold right now. We are coordinating with all staff. There's a lot of permitting agencies involved with this as well to determine the best time to proceed with that. The, as soon as we have some more dates, certainly can come back and provide an update on timeframe for the additional construction in that vicinity. These greenware, greenway projects, you know, they're, they're not easy projects. They touch a lot of property owners. They touch a lot, there's a lot of agencies involved, from DOT to those that, that permit this. So I just ask, kind of bear with us through construction. Once we get through this construction phase, it's going to be a nice greenway and a great connection for residents and everyone to take advantage of, so...
Awesome. Questions or comments? Mr. Bun.
When you do close O'Neill Street, how long do you think that'll be shut down?
Still working through that, but anywhere from a month and a half or so is our guess right now, but we will have more firm updates later.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, sir.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on 220 East Main Street. The upset bid process is finally completed. On Friday at 5:00, it ended. As you recall, about three months ago, we started that process with a starting bid of $50,000 with Fred Lee. Over the last three months, every 10 days, it's been getting upbidded and upbidded and upbidded. We stopped the bidding at $110,300 without getting a follow-up bid, so pretty much doubled the initial offering on the project. So the highest bidder is the Lees. The next steps are, we'll be working with our attorneys to draft up a deed. They will get the property as is where is, and of course, this is just the building portion of the property. And we'll be bringing this all back to you on November 18th for action, including deed.
Thank you. Yeah, that's fantastic.
And the window helped a lot. Thank you, Bob.
Yeah. All right, I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, councilman and mayor and staff. I'm Donna Steele with, I'm president of the Women's Club of Clayton. And we've come here tonight to talk to you about another celebration of 150 years for Clayton. And Susan Johnson there is passing these out for you to look at. As you know, you have supported us for 14 years for The Taste of Carolina, and we decided this year that we would mix it up and do something different. So what you have in front of you is, we're calling it the Small Town Gala. It's a completely different format. It's going to be November 9th, and it'll be starting dinner at 7:00. So the tickets include quite a bit. So again, it's a different kind of format than we've ever had. We are not with our restaurants here in Clayton because of the busyness of Harvest Fest, and we could not take that weekend on a Thursday night because they would not support us. So that's why we moved, and we're now November 9th. So as you can see, we're at the farm at 42. And what the dinner and the ticket includes is the dinner by Casey's. We're having dancing from Raquel's studio, she used to be here in town. And we're going to have casino cash for you, so you can gamble if you want to. And we also, that includes one reverse raffle ticket. And the grand prize is $10,000, and you don't have to be there to win. So we think it's going to be fun, it's going to be different. And again, it's called the Small Town Gala. And we really need you to support us in this. And as you said about the ghost walk, I have gone to Donna White, and she's going to be our historical character as a greeter. And she'll be in the costume she did for the ghost walk. And the ghost walk was wonderful, everybody. It wasn't scary. All the little kids wanted to be scared. So anyway, I wanted to thank you for your support and to be successful. Rachel, how many tickets should we sell?
We should sell 350.
350. So it's really much more than we've ever done before, so we need your support in this. So please look at it and give us a call. We can deliver tickets, whatever you want us to do. So please look at it and consider coming. And I'll do in a side note, come by the clubhouse, the Women's Club of Clayton, across from the library, because we had a downtown development, and you matched us 50%. And we're completely new, painted, new carpet outside, so it looks really, really great. And I understand they put flowers out today, so please come by and look at, look at the clubhouse, because we're real proud of it. We're 101 years old now. Wow. So please, please give me a call or give any of us a call. We are 70 strong as far as members of our club now. We got 20 new members last year. And that just tells you how, how many new people are coming to Clayton and want to get involved. So thank you a lot, and please come out November 9th. Rachel, did you want to say anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, ladies. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Then I'll turn it over to council for comments. All right. I'm going to call for a 10-minute recess, and then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All right, so I'm just calling for a 10-minute break. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call our meeting back to order, and I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries, and we do not expect any action to be taken. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjourn.
Second. A motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.